But it's pledgeable leaders. Dr. Agenda Ken, I'm getting motion cut as first, Joe was second, all in favor. Passes one announcement tonight, Mrs. Miller is absent tonight due to personal reasons. We are a little blurred here. Study session meetings are designed for the purpose of having administrative updates to the Board of Education. There are no public comments at study session meetings. Residents may attend the next scheduled business meeting on April 13th, 2021. Head or contact the board via email at boe@chitschools.org with any comments or questions. All questions come into the Board, into the Office of the Public Information Officer and are shared with the Board and/or superintendent as appropriate. Policy questions, concerns are typically addressed by the Board President. Operational questions, concerns are typically addressed by the superintendent and/or designated. With that, Dr. Robinson, you have comments for tonight?
Yes, thank you very much, Steve. I have a few comments and then we are going to the budget presentation. Lot of interest in updates and changes this week that I want to bring the Board up to date on. Some of you may have already read about in the newspaper. Probably one that's ongoing that we're still trying to unravel. Recently, yesterday, actually, the Board of Regents took certain of what they call emergency actions related to assessments. Three, three assessments being one, Regents exams being the other. And at this point, the Board of Regents initially submitted a waiver to the U.S. Department of Education to basically exempt all exams and not have any this year. The U.S. Department of Education responded that thou shall do some form of three, three testing and thou shall do some form of exit exams for high school. Subsequently, the decision of the Board of Regents is to do a modified version of the three, three testing. Typically, it's a two-day test, and now they're going to do a one-day version of it. Dr. Wood and a bunch of folks will be working through details. Our guidance just came out today, and so we'll be reading those guidance to make heads and tails of what's saying already. We see a lot of, I don't say a lot, I don't want to quantify that too much. We see some inconsistencies or some potential pinch points that I anticipate that during this week will be brought to the State Education Department's attention and you probably will see some revised guidance coming out related to three, three testing. In the meantime, we're working, Dr. Wood will be working directly with Lindsay Fuentes, Public Information Officer, to put together a communication that will be sent out not only to staff but to parents. So we have a consistent message from the school district and then respective building principals, administrators can follow up accordingly. We want to have a consistent message. Hopefully, we have that in the coming days. We don't want to be too fast to send that message out and then something else change and then people wondering what's true or not true. So we'd rather be, take our time and be accurate. So the three, three testing is one that we're looking at. The second part pertains to the Regents exams. Last year, if you recall, this time about this time, right here, it was about April, they decided to cancel all Regents exams as a result of COVID, which was a no-brainer called at that point. With this one, it's an interesting piece because the State Education Department is still waiting for the U.S. Department of Education to rule on their request to waive all Regents exams. And right now, the indication is the USDA is still saying still need to have some kind of exams, but they haven't come out with a final decision yet. So in interim, the State Education Department already ruled there will be no August Regents exams, which, if you recall, we've had some kids, well, not a lot, one or two kids, who relied on that August Regents exam to graduate. However, a lot of those kids were in a better place because of the exams from last year, put them in a better place to move forward for graduation if Regents exam was the only barrier to graduate from high school. And right now, the conversation surrounds four Regents exam. In other words, if the U.S. Department of Education comes back and say thou shall do some kind of exit exams, they're going to look at the ELA, which ELA is accumulative exams that typically in the junior years, accumulative assessment. Algebra I, which is depends on certain kids, could be as young as eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade. That sequence depends if kids are accelerated or not. The Earth Science and the Living Environment, those are the four Regents exams. And that would hit probably again most ninth and 10th grade kids for the most part. And so the big question with that is something that just came out, and I printed out myself to look at it, is the scheduling of when those exams will occur. Because if you look at the school calendar, the last two weeks of school, let's pull up my calendar, not reading email. For those people watching, you say, hi, why is he reading email while he's talking to the Board? I'm not. The last week of school, the 14th, 15th, is typically what we call local exams. And the 15th, 16th on, they go into the Regents exam sequence. Without the June Regents exams now, the big question we had or the big concern we had was the timing of those exams. We didn't want to have one on Monday, one another day versus if we have a block of time, we know that kids will be in attendance here and then we have to figure out administratively what's the implication of the Regents exams on attendance moving forward. Right now, the schedule has just came out is to have those exams seemingly Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the last four days of the year, which is a better situation for us. There's a piece on the 17th which we have to look at a little closer. So that's the piece that we're going to be unraveling this week, actually tomorrow, with high school administration to make sure that they'll be in sync with that piece which goes also into the communication. The wrinkle to this whole thing is, and honestly, I'm a little bit dismayed. I understand the need to cancel some of the assessments. I also understand flexibility, but the piece I'm a little concerned about, because if you read the headline, I'm not blaming this on the State Education Department and I'm not blaming it on the newspaper, but headline this morning was "Test optional." Whenever that comes out, racist, raise eyebrows, she's coming out, really? And we have some kids who see that as, oh. And I have to tell you, you know, I've been accused of a lot of things in life and sometimes even people think of arrogance and the need to go with those terminology. But I have, I don't apologize for us as a system wanting to hold our kids to bear high standards of performance because I truly want our students to be as prepared as they possibly can be when they leave Shen to go into many different fields once they leave the walls of Shen. And so we value what assessments mean. We value what a quality experience we. We also recognize that because of how education is provided, there's certain areas that this problem we test on these exams that we didn't get to. We know that. We know that going in because these exams, as I just pointed out on the call today, were developed maybe two, three years ago, prior to a whole COVID situation. But, and, and not a but because I don't want to negate that point, and it still though provides us an opportunity from a diagnostic perspective to try to identify where kids are. So as we build forward with kids, so if a kid comes out Algebra I, going to Algebra II, we want to. So the conversation we'll be having is if we don't have, how do we ensure as a system that regardless of what the state does with Regents exams, that we have mechanisms in place to really understand where kids are to help bridge them to the next spot? And I don't use the word the gap piece because it's not a deficit perspective. It's how do we build on where kids are and bridge them to where they're going to go as they progress through our system? So those are the conversations that we're working on now. And so for us, it's more than just, are we going to have Regents and not have Regents? It's about how do we ensure that the progression of quality education continues practically as well as psychologically? And that's a big piece of it because we don't want to have people, quite frankly, to think, oh, well, I'll have this pass a class. So I just, you know, when I was at Brown, we used to call it, yeah, guys who got from Yale, I got the gentleman to see if Brown didn't do that, you know? The gentleman to see this pass your way just from showing up at class. We don't want that because we know that's not a good experience for kids. That will haunt them forever moving forward. And so I emphasize this point because that's the message we want to. We want our teachers to be working very hard, administration to be working hard, support staff to be working hard. Our kids have been working very hard. And we want them to keep that sense of determination that we know that makes great adults. So I don't want to pontificate too much on that point, but that's the messaging that we want to get out as well. So we're working through those details this week related to the Regents exams and some of those cancellations and what the state needs to be as well. But I do understand why the state needs to make some of the decision because, you know, we're spoiled here at Shen in many ways in comparison because our kids have been in school. We have some places that kids haven't touched a school in a year. In some cases, literally have not, much less physically have not. And so that's where, I understand that piece of the kitchen, we come out because of the circumstances of their lives. And I think we want to make sure that we stay true to our perspective as a system without unfairly sending messages because we know some kids get on exams, oh my God, and I didn't learn this, but it's fine. It's fine if you didn't, you're not supposed to know that. Focus on what you're supposed to know and do those things. And then we'll build bridges for those areas that we know that we need to compensate for moving forward. So I pause there, same question related to that, that was the earlier question that came up. So that's one big change. Another piece I want to talk to in terms of the state budget stuff as we go into the budget process here tonight as well. Just some reminders, we have the virtual legislative meetings tomorrow for those of you who are available for those. And if you want to jump on, the one tomorrow morning, 8:30 with Senator Woman Walsh. The 18th at 2:30 with Senator Jordan, Daphne Jordan. And then 19th with Senator Woman, Kara Warner, at 11:00. So if you want to jump on any of those, reach out to Vanessa to make sure you get the link if you don't want to have it. And part of it, we're going to, some of this stuff tonight, you're going to hear me talk about advocacy stuff. So we have some of those conversations around those things and kind of listen to see where they're coming from on some of those topics as well. So we're looking forward to having those conversations with them tomorrow. And the last piece about the 24th, and we've been, you know, it's interesting. We have a dedication plan for the tech wing, which all the board members are invited to. And, you know, I never realized how popular it is of dedication at Shen, that everyone wants to come. Like, no, we're going to limit it. So we hear people saying that the superintendent is being unreasonable. I'm not being unreasonable, we're just going to limit it to a number of people because we can't have a packed house in a COVID era and those kind of things. So we're going to limit it to a manageable number of individuals for that tech wing dedication on the 24th. And again, if you don't have the information, Mrs. Ford will be more than happy to relay that to you. So pretty excited about that project coming to fruition. So those are the, oh, the last piece I want to talk about quickly about, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about vaccines. We're still working hard on that. Mrs. Carmen, actually, she sent me a text earlier this afternoon to say, look at the updates, but I just haven't had a chance to look at our spreadsheet in terms of the numbers of folks. We sent out a correspondence, she did actually, Mrs. Carmen, she's not here tonight. She sent out a correspondence to, so we know people who have based upon their response to surveys as well as other information we have. And so we go into process elimination. So if we know that you have or in the process, and so if you're not on here, you're over here. And so we're trying to, so folks over here, we want to say, hey, we have a great opportunity, which we do on this Friday. It's part of a collaborative with Saratoga County DOH. They have more vaccine capacity. And so we're hoping to get, who knows, maybe 100, 150 people or so lined up for Friday to go in and get their first shot. And the sequence is important because this Friday then, they get their second shot prior to going on the break. Versus if next Friday, we won't have one because the second shot will be during that break week and that creates some complications for folks who may not be in town as well. So we're trying to push the sequence and trying to get more people into getting vaccines. And I, you know, wrongly or rightly, we have some people saying, oh, are you trying to say that I have to take a shot? No, the law says we can't mandate people to take a shot, but we certainly trying to strongly encourage that the more people have vaccines, the greater we get back to a sense of normalcy in terms of interactions in space as well. And I'm going to talk about a little bit about how it impacts our budget process as well. So that's kind of like where we are right now with the vaccine pieces. And I know Mrs. Hoffman, you had a specific question I'd ask you if you could ask me.
Right. It had to do with the order that passed yesterday that requires employees to be competent for up to four hours.
And so. And so HR has been, we knew that was coming down the line, down the pipe. And because of this pod, this pod was designed, the pod in Saratoga was designed so schools don't have that bind where somebody has an appointment at 10 o'clock, you live up there, second period class. You know, the pod was designed to be from 2:30 on so that people could go after school and get that. And it's easy, it's coordinated, it's for people in school, and so you're not in long lines, you're not waiting, those kind of things. So the pod has actually been tremendously beneficial to us to avoid some of that. So to date, we have had very low of those. And when we have those, if someone already scheduled, okay, we're not going to say unscheduled because it is what it is. But that's the reason why we've been using the pod. So the pod has been tremendously beneficial to us as a school system because then we have a controlled environment and a time sequence that's good for school as well as good convenience of people knowing they're going there and they have particular time and they deal with our nurses, it's our nurses at that pod vaccinating Shen employees. And so there's a familiarity with that process and it makes it much, much easier. So right now, today, we don't have a lot of issues as that particular law pertains. So I'm going to stand up, actually, present from up here. I haven't stood up in a long time. So. Let me try to see from where we're here. So we're going to talk about the budget piece tonight. And Mrs., okay, I want to see like part of your hand. So the first part of being a superintendent is make sure you always see the Board President's face. And so I have my mask on for people who say social distancing. And so I want to make sure that the people know that I may not be rude and not compliant. So as you see on the topic here, the whole notion of reimagining education resilience is important too. That's our theme going into the next year. And so there's a lot of meaning behind those words, right? So we have been, we have been really focused on a quality experience this year, capturing some of those best practices and moving them forward. And so, but we know that it's going to require resilience. We know it's going to require sense of importance because we're still going to be making changes. So that kind of speaks to that pattern as we move forward. Not going to go through everything in detail because we've gone through some of this with the Board already, but certainly for, we have recognized we have two new Board members. Several years ago, our mission statement, just nice words on a piece of paper, but it didn't jump off the paper, it didn't come to life. And so we translated those into things that now drive what we do. Talk about engagement, talk about innovation, all these are big rocks. It's now actual practical pieces of our goals, things that drive what we do as a system. So now our mission is alive all the time within our system. So it's always a reminder, once you get into the budget process, that what are we working towards? And so this is always what we're working towards and supportive so we're not distracted by shiny objects, so to speak, for virtual shiny objects, or get hijacked by political maneuvering versus we're working towards subjective that keeps us as a system focused on our North Star all the time. So that becomes a big piece for us as well. And similarly, this is actually revised, this is proposed language for objectives for next year. And I want to point this out because it's something I'm learning from this year already. As we plan it for next year, I'm putting some language that I think kind of captures what our objectives should be. And that's one highlight there, for example. So the first piece I'm talking about, leveraging budget investment opportunities. We're going to be talking about a lot of leveraging federal funds, all those kind of things that we have to be even smarter moving into the next three years than we have been in the past in terms of how do we take a dollar and split it out into pieces versus trying to spend it all right now and have a little guarantee that we're going to have a dollar tomorrow? So how do we kind of spread it out a little bit as we move forward? So leveraging piece becomes a big piece of it. The equitable resource is something we've been focusing on. And we saw this year, because of some of the work we've done in the past, we didn't have any school that had more than less, everyone had a quality experience. And so we saw that, so keeping that equitable piece of allocation piece become a real piece of as we move forward. And then the next piece is something that we kind of transitioned to in terms of now that we kind of re-norm it, how do we make sure that we have the structures in place and there's a predictability in terms of how resources is used and we can predict our success? So in other words, if we're going to invest in something, we already know why we invest in it. We already know what the expected outcome is, so we know the investment is the source to that outcome and not invest and cost our fingers and hope that we have a positive return. That's not the game that we're playing. We're not playing with the monopoly, we're playing with the lives of kids. And so we have to make sure that we have a structure and predictability. So we're talking about everything from making sure that we know our staff and we know who's doing what. And because we had to unpack the entire school this year, it gave us a chance to really look at everyone within the organization and then try to make sure we have the right structures in place. So I mean, everything you name it, from food service to transportation operation, all those structures that we had to unpack. And so since we have unpacked, kind of put it back in nice order, now we want to make sure that we keep that structure because all those things are investment of dollars, by the way. So how do we make sure that the structures lend to the type of predictability that we want from as a system? So this kind of drives then this whole premise behind the things that we're trying to do with this budget proposal as we move forward. And so again, these are some construct, if you will, call them that, that drives, the question that drives all of our thinking in terms of why we invest in a certain thing, this versus that. Because you always have more requests than resources. So you have to differentiate between the things that you're going to invest in and the things you're not, and know exactly why. In some cases, we invest in certain things, not necessarily because they're the cheapest or the most costly, but because they're the most impactful. And so there's a wide variety of factors that goes into making some of those decisions. And this kind of, this kind of forces always different economic perspective of the things we're focusing on, why we're making those certain decisions versus other decisions as we move forward. Then we are going to, as a system, we don't make decisions because they're a popular thing to do. We're making this decision because this is the best way to use our resources to meet the demands of the students that we serve. Comes back to the very fundamental premise every time. And so sometimes hard because some people want certain things because it's popular with them or to them. And we're saying, okay, I hear you, however, let's play that out. And if I were to do that and not do this, you see the implication of the two things. And so we try to play things out even before we make those proposals as we move forward. So again, if I'm going too fast on anything, make sure I show you that. This graphic is one that really, really kind of puts in context of the larger complication with this year's budget process. The complication isn't about how we calculate or analyze how much resource we have. Kathy Chase and her team, they do a wonderful job of that. The complication isn't how we design instructional models, that's what her team does a great job of that. Complication is about having the right people on the proverbial bus. Jill Bush, HR folks, does a great job of that. The complication is, what would all that look like? We know how to do all that very well, but the question is, what would all that look like? What are we trying to achieve? And so this kind of graphic kind of gives you some sense of, right now, we live over here. We live, last September, we opened schools and then March, every, March a year ago, everything went dark and we had to pivot in the dark to enlighten schools. So the six feet piece became our mantra, right? The six feet social distancing drove many things, all our operations as a school system. And now there's, and I'm personally myself pushing this like heck to try to see how do we get, as particularly as we get to more herd immunity within schools. And also we know that the data shows, and not only in Shen, but CDC came out with a pretty extensive thing the other day that shows infection rates in schools minimal in comparison to community infection rates. So the reality of it is then we probably could do more in schools now than we have. The issue that we have, and again, because of another role that I play as a professional, I'm on these committees where I have colleagues who are trying to get to September or where we start in September, and we're trying to get to next September. In other words, they're just trying to get kids in space and we're saying, we've had kids in space and we want to try to figure out how do we have more flexibility? And so there's a lot of talk right now across, that it involves across the country, about what does three feet look like in terms of social distance, what's capacity? So we're in the process now of running through those scenarios. You know, what does a classroom look like? What does the schedule look like? And we were on a call today and one of the administrators jokingly, Dr. Wood, and I know it was a joke, that, oh, we are, what's the number, 15,000 edition of our schedule? And I probably should have said on the call, well, we're probably going to be at 20,000 before we're done. Because, and I see Mrs. Flores back there, she's probably trying to think like, God, I'm going to be here for another night, every night this week to go to the 20,000 mark. But it's symbolic to the point I'm saying to the Board is that we're going to do the due diligence. And I say we, not me, we, the collective we, we're going to do the due diligence to try to come up with the best model that maximizes our capacity, be it student schedule, be it transportation schedule, all those things. We had a meeting last week about transportation schedule. If we do this and allocate this folks and trans, they're running multiple scenarios. If we do this, what's this? I share it because we want to see what does this look like with updated vaccination, with low transmission? And what can we start in the spring to start kind of piling some things in, doing some things differently? A good piece, a good example of this, I had a conversation with Frank Rizzella, who's our director for performing arts. And CDC talks about, you know, arts related to instrument versus chorus and singing. And so with, I forgot what they call it, the thing for the instruments to prevent stuff from flying out, it's going to be named for it. If you have, if you have a cover at the end of your horn, it's going to come back to me, it's age. And so we're talking about those kind of things. It allows us now to start looking in April, May, and he's working with all the music folks. Maybe we could do, instead of kids dropping a part, playing their horn with these things, we could do six feet and now we have more capacity. We do more things. Chorus is still a trump card because right now, there's a lot of things about, 50 people singing in the space with no mask, what does it look like? Versus can they sing with six feet? I'm sharing all those kinds, those are the big questions that we're asking right now, that those folks who are charged, they're trying to figure out what those things are and how to best do those things. And that's what I mean by the transition in the spring. Same way, we have kids that we need to have them actually spend some time back in school this spring and not September. Because again, I don't want to share with me with the principal because we're doing COVID testing for kids who might be accelerated, those kind of things, and they had to come back in space. One young kid was absolutely petrified from walking into the school building because that person hadn't been in the school building a whole year. And I remember that person came into the building and didn't want to leave. So the parents, I want to come back to school tomorrow. And the parents are like, really? And yes, so once the kid got in the space, the kid realized, yeah, I want to be back in school tomorrow. And so we want to figure out how do we do those kind of things? Because if we get to here, no social distancing, we can't wait to get to here before we start planning to get to there. So this impacts what we do process-wise this year, also impacts how we think about our budget process. Because we think in our budget process in this domain, we're not thinking our budget process in that domain. So that's the, if you want to say it was a gamble, this is our domain that we're playing in. We're going to be somewhere in this space based upon where things are progressing now, based upon a lot of conversations that's taking place with people who are way smarter than me about some of these topics. So with this being said, this is the COVID implications, I said before, the three feet, the 80% to 90% vaccination piece. Those are some key factors that would drive this. Some lessons learned, we spent a lot of time today, one of our principles, I mean, for example, people sharing out what are some of the lessons they started learning? How do we take advantage of technology? How do we take advantage of our learning management system? How do we take it to be is a law that came out about personal identified information on all these software packages? Because everybody created everything and pushed it out to get to students. And so how do we kind of, we've been rolling back those things and what are those software packages? That's good for us, beneficial for us, and we move forward, those kind of things. So we take advantage of those lessons learned and carry them forward as part of our budget process. These are scenario analysis I mentioned before. And we're doing a ton of scenario analysis that we're looking at transportation, looking at everything that we're doing now and asking the question, what are those things that was beneficial to move forward as we move forward? The six twelfth scheduling here, middle school, high school, looking at those schedules. Again, looking at the block schedule, tremendous benefit gained from the block schedule. How do we enhance some of those kind of things as we move forward? What are the staff information surrounding those kind of things? The possibility that we still would have to have CBR options, a completely virtual learning option. We don't know what mandate is going to come out from the state, but we know that that could be a mandate as well. It's a good tool, a resource for us to try to provide education with kids who may need alternative way of being educated. So those kind of things we have to take into consideration. Especially area teachers, people who are teaching outside of certification. Roughly, I got a number from Dr. Wood the other day, at the elementary level, we had over 60-plus teachers who are teaching outside of their, either their assignment or certification, a lot of people. We can't backfill all those people by saying, oh, well, we're going to keep that same model and just hire 60 more people so we can do those. That's not a possibility. So now we have to say then how do we redesign the model that one, yes, we want to have, as I mentioned in performing arts, we want to have more of our performing arts next year, more than we had this year. And so how do we start looking at transitioning some of those things this spring to work on? What does that look like, feel like, smell like, once we get to September within the existing capacity that we have? And so all those are the scenario analysis that's taking place right now as we do the budget process. That's why I said before, the other piece of process we have done over and over and over, we know that but these are the factors now that we have to take into consideration and say, does the budget provide enough flexibility to capture those respective scenarios? So we work from, okay, what's the most costly, if you want to look at it, to what's the feasible, most reasonable approach to the budget process? And somewhere in between is where we're going to land eventually in September. So that's kind of the model that's taking place. Let me pause. Again, if that question, just raise your hand, I'll try to stop and address your questions. So with this piece of it, this kind of gives you some sense of then challenges, opportunities, and assume reality. So if you know me, I'm finally saying how do we transform our challenges into opportunities, right? So the challenges that we talk about, and by the way, that little suitcase up there, that little graphic, there's like a little suitcase. And the little suitcase, I want to let you know as a Board, if you click on it, nothing happened, nothing expensive would jump out on me. But this is a slide that we'll be unpacking at the next budget piece as well. So what I'm doing today is kind of, so, and I use, I think it was names I was talking to, that, you know, so, and my kids also been talking about it all. It's so funny, you have adult kids who want to do all the childish things again, so my kids now all want to go to Disney World again. And I'm thinking, okay, last time I was at Disney World, I had one kid on the shoulder, one kid in the stroller, and one kid I had to tie because I had to hold the kid on my shoulder. I had tie roll around ways, it rolled around his waist because I didn't want the three kids to run off. And my wife was tired, it was 85, 95 degrees in Florida and she was always 10 steps behind. And so that was my experience. And so that was my experience in last Disney World. So I'm not looking forward to having a twenty-three-year-old on my shoulder, uh, eighteen-year-old in my lap and tying my, my wrists to my twenty-one-year-old. Um, so, so now I want to go to Disney World, but it kind of prompted me to think about, you know, when you go and you have complicated situations, before you start marching off, we need to lay out a map, lay out the whole picture, right? So that's what I'm trying to do tonight with you as a board. Lay out the whole picture and then kind of come back and say, these are areas we're going to unpack. Because we are not going to get distracted on one thing and miss the bigger picture. I mean, does that make some sense? So that's what I'm trying to do to, with you as a board tonight. So, so we're going to unpack what does this fiscal cap, the, the tax cap piece of it? Because right now, our tax cap calculation is at two percent. Last year was three point two, three point six or something, huge difference, the tax cap limit by expenditure budget. So all of a sudden, whoa, baby, we almost spent half. And so, so we started off with a tight budget, like it or not. So that puts a whole different perspective in terms of having a good budget. That's a huge piece of the, the piece of it. We've been talking about fiscal cliff and I'm going to provide some updates. The federal funds, because the governor's budget infused for SHAN, about nine million dollars of federal funds, scary. Some people look at it and say, oh, well, you guys got, no, no, that's a problem. Because if the state doesn't have nine million dollars next year, where it's going to come from? But it's, it's a recent update, so each day there's a, there's, there's good news, hopefully every day there's good news. So I'm sharing it with you because this, this is a process for a reason, right? That's why we don't make a decision today, we always want to follow the tea leaves and see how things are going. But these are some challenges that we weren't about COVID restrictions, I mentioned before, one of the COVID restrictions. So those are some of the challenges. Some opportunities that we have, if the board recall, last March, we, we were talking about multi-year scenario budget sequence. And the multi-year scenarios, looking, we were up to twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five. That's how far out we were looking last year. And so because we did that, we started taking some steps to say, how do we then start kind of controlling our fiscal destiny by being keen and shrewd about our fiscal management of resources? And so, so, so now we're looking back at what are some of the capacities that gained from nineteen, twenty, some of the things we're building in. So, so in other words, we're taking very, very deliberate steps to say, okay, I'm spending a dollar here, it's like the whole notion, right? Pay yourself first, I'm taking advice, personal advice, when you get paid, pay yourself and then pay your bills. Because if you pay your bills, you never pay yourself and you never have money, you're always running behind bills. This is the personal advice for free for all the people listening. Um, so, so, so what we did as a system, we had to pay ourselves because I can't go to John Creek taxpayer and say, because we didn't do these things, by the way, Jack, your taxes are way too high, that's not acceptable neither, nor can I pass my things and both ends stays going to come to the rescue. So we have to control our fiscal destiny. So I share this point because we've been looking at this now for two years, this is the second year, because we know the next two to three years could be very challenging for us. So, so that's where we come in with the team fiscal management. The debt service pieces, and the board know we have declining debt. And as we go out with the capital project, which we're going to talk about briefly tonight, the debt's declining actually to, almost to a detriment to us. The reason why our tax cap is so low is because we've been so good about reducing our debt. So all of a sudden, we penalize because we don't be smart about reinvesting. And so, you know, but I'm just saying, no, we're not just going to be reckless just to have a higher tax cap because that's not going to need it. But solve one problem, create another problem down the road. So, so declining debt strategic reserve, we've been talking about those kind of things. Those are the things, the decision that you as a board, we as administration made so we can have a better handle on our fiscal reality moving forward. So those are the opportunities that we want to make sure that we can do what we can, um, as a system moving forward. The federal stimulus fund is, is a big piece, I'm going to, I'm going to talk a bit more of this. And that's more and more developing, the funds are coming through. The question now is what, what flexibility we have with funds and not having the funds, and again, this is another slide, I'm going to jump a little bit more. And here's our student reality. Everything is driven by this, that, that academic and operational excellence doesn't go away. That's our North Star, that's what we're always driven by. So, so regardless of these things, we're trying to get to this. And, and, and also, I don't want to discount the, the, the community confidence is something that we've had and we want to keep. This is an asset, folks. Community confidence is an asset. When the community embrace, appreciate what, who we are, what you do as a board, people then know that, you know, during tough times, you're going to make the best decisions under those circumstances. That's something that we can never ever disregard and take for granted. And so therefore, we plan our process, we plan those things in mind to say to folks, if I say we need extra help, trust me, we need extra help. We're not going to ask it unless we need it. Um, and, and so, so, so that's a big asset for us as we move forward. So, so with that being said, then we start going to some of the things that we're trying to do, cost effectiveness is a big piece of it. So, so again, we start talking about the things we're doing now, personnel management. Um, um, and you see here later on, we talk about retirees and, and, and how do we, so somebody retired at step twenty-four, we hired at step four. The differential that we use to preserve costs, to preserve programs, um, in our budget, those kind of things. Personnel management, somebody walks out the door today, we take a step back and ask the question, do we still need to replace that position? Do we need to replace that position the same way? Do we do it differently because we get a better, um, um, productivity, a better product as a result of a new person, a different person? All those kind of questions we ask all the time. And those things lead to cost effectiveness. It's not about cost cutting, there's a big difference between cost cutting, cost cutting, you just cut just the same. Cost effectiveness, we also want to be more effective in how we use resources. The value add is a big piece of it. Again, back to some of the things, talking about instructional technology, uh, ruled the day big time this past year. And we invest a lot of money in instructional technology across the board. Um, I probably should technology across the board, take a word instructional of it, because it impact everyone in every dimension. So how do we make sure that the value add of those kind of things, P P E, all those things, future ready furniture? Has a big piece of, especially with the spacing, and now seeing that we have different furniture types for kids to have stand-up desks now. And, and so, I mean, certain things that has changed the whole dynamic of the learning experience for kids, great investments that we make to again, enhance the learning experience of kids. Cost containment is a big piece of it, health insurance, um, is a big piece. And, and again, I think there's a, this shift, it's not a problem, this, it should have been a suitcase on this because we have to unpack a little bit more health insurance. But we are, we are planning to spend about twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollars on health insurance. And here's the kicker, for, for three, maybe four years, we are pretty flat line, pretty flat line. And COVID hit and now all health insurance companies saying, hey, you got to recalibrate. And so we're expecting that all of a sudden, we're going to have rates potentially ten percent adjustments. And so, so for us, it's shock to our system because we go from zero minimal, from bouncing with our, with coalitions and and different things that we do with our health insurance brokers to like, whoa, we could potentially have a double digits. But I always look back, well, you know what, we have some benefit from the past. And so how do we make sure we do? But that's one of those areas we're going to have to unpack, retirement, pension costs, those costs are pretty flat line right now. But we also, because I'm on a retirement pension board and I know how to sequence though, we know that once the, the, the market recalibrate and the awful market this past year gets into the calculation, those rates are going to adjust. And so we have to know that right now and how do we plan for that two years out? And so those are kind, so they may not impact this budget, but what we do in this budget gives us capacity to plan for the, 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 the future years as well. And collective bargaining, we're in the process now of negotiating with three units. And so we take all those things as well as a part of the process. Because we're negotiating now in this year's budget, and we probably want to settle in next year's budget, we have to take those things into consideration as we move forward. Again, if there are questions, please, um, let me know if you have any questions. So, so here's some repurposing things, and I, and I deliberately put in no new money. So these are things that we're looking at, um, repurposing different resources to get some things done that we need to get done. Um, so, so certainly, um, one of the big focuses, and this is certainly COVID contingent, is how do we start looking at, um, the, 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 the present form? In other words, what is school's experience, like in art, athletics, all those things that were, were significantly compressed as a result of COVID? So we plan, how do we not unpack and expand those things back out, so to speak? And so, so those aren't necessarily new costs, but those are things that continue upon some of those restrictions that I said before in terms of how can we phase those things out or phase those things in, however you want to look at this perspective going to come from? So this is one of those areas that we're really focused on, and that's why some of the things we're going to do in the spring, that we're going to try to do to build the capacity for September. Um, instructional resources, we have, we always have allocation within the budget for instructional resources. So the question is, it's not what we, it's not how much we spend, what we spend the money on. And so it's going to be a big focus on, on K five math, um, a new series, we went to a series, uh, five years ago, Dr. Wood, maybe? Uh, six, oh, you raised, you said eight years ago, they're around, they're a long time, flowers, we're having fun. Um, and so now we're looking to, to revamp and get another series for the next ten years. We got eight out of that one, I'm guessing we get ten out of the next one, I'm not putting pressure on folks, but I think we get ten out of the next one. Um, so K five is a big piece of it, literacy is a big part of the work that we've been working on, K five literacy work. And technology integration is always going to be a continuous piece for us, um, as a system as well. Targeted professional development, we know that we transitioned to the block schedule this year. However, it's still not the, the full engagement of block schedule that we want. And so we're going to have to make sure we put some money in P D, so our professional development allocations. Instead of doing those things, we're going to be doing this thing. That's why I said before, we have to radiification, right? We can't do everything, so we have to decide what's the most important thing that we have to do. So block schedule will be a big, big piece of it. The progressive, um, um, practices is, is, is a big part of how do we do some, looking at the best practices that we have and then provide P E around some of those type things. And again, just an anecdotal example, we saw some teachers, Dr. Wood and I have been visiting all those teachers who will teach outside of certification. And one teacher was like, oh my God, when I go into my classroom, she's doing C V L now, I'm absolutely going to be using this, I'm using C V L in my regular classroom. And so now, how do we socialize those best practices through professional development? How do we get that person to now share that with all the colleagues? And so those one person's best practice become a system's perspective as an example of those kind of things. So that's a big part of what we're doing. Equity diversity, inclusion, and training is a big part of it. We are ongoing training now, several of the board members were on the training session yesterday, and we'll be talking in the future about those kind of things. And the last piece right here is, and this, but it's not last for, because it's not important. Um, the whole senior experience is something that we were going to talk about. And the conversation we just had now about, I think, the change of region's exams and how to sort of change, or potentially change, whole high school experience? Because when you think about, so much of the high school experience is driven by the region's exams and courses. And so now, if we have greater flexibility, right now, everything is senior experience, it could be a whole, quite frankly, a nine twelve experience in terms of how kids, what do we want kids to actually do? And if you, if you write it behind, um, um, Mr. Presley is our profile document, we talk about the profile of a Shane Grant profile called Middle School, Profile Elementary School. So, so we start driving more because of greater flexibility. So, so, so one problem could create another solution, another side of it. So right now, it's the high school folks are looking at next year's senior experience, we have kids back in space. Do we need to have kids have, um, um, three-hour study hall, two-hour study hall, or some of us? How do we create different situations where, particularly with technology, kids can have more practical experiences? I wanted, I think I'm going to college to major on this, but I don't know who that is or what that person does. How about spending the day with, with the systems in, in the health world? Or spend the day with Mr. Mr. Presley in, in the, in the, in the technology world, and those kind of things? So, so kids have real experiences when they leave here, they're going into the next phase of their lives with their eyes wide open. So those are some kind, and those things aren't necessarily new money things, but those are process things that we have to then reallocate individual time and energy to address those things. So that's why I mean, how do we repurpose some of those things as we move forward? And these are conversations that come out of the budget. And so you say, well, you haven't said anything about money, because that's the last thing we think about. We think about how do we maximize opportunities first and not having the situation that, okay, I want to have this dispensed. So just, no, we want to put everything on the table, think it through, and then we start saying, then what's feasible from a fiscal perspective? So the tail is wagging the dog in that sequence, um, um, of creation. So, so kind of keep that piece of it in mind. And so here's some leverage the resources, and last time you probably saw the slide, I had eighteen on it. Um, and so yesterday, or, um, somebody informed me that we had nineteen, and who knows, tomorrow could be twenty, because people making decisions about retirement, um, and if, if they make retirement while we're still doing the budget process, we use those as opportunities. And so opportunities, as you see this piece up here, we make an assumption that replacement will come in at step four, on average. And I say on average because we may have someone at step ten and have three other people at step one and things average out. Just kind of give an example of, of that sequence. And so, so right now we have, um, nineteen individuals, I think I should have updated the, the elementary eight, if I'm not mistaken. I think I'm, I didn't update that, maybe I did. Um, probably numbers I'm sure I added, but I'm not changing nineteen. So right now, we talk about eight hundred, eight thousand, that gives us to leverage everything to offset what we call normal cost increases as well as opportunities to do some things that we may want to do in the budget within the already tight footprint because of the, the tax cap being at the two percent mark. So, so that's what I mean by leveraging resources, this one of those big rocks that we try to leverage as a part of the process. That's why we asked the board to, to have the retirement incentive that we do out early on. So we could try to get our early number for our budget process, use that as capacity to help develop budget forward. So, so we went out with those, we started the process with, with incentive back in November, if I'm not mistaken, and started getting people to start thinking about retirement, those kind of things. And this is where the, this is where the proof is being born and in the sequence of things as we go through the budget process. So those, again, those, that's like the backstory behind a lot of things that we do. And so, so again, we'll be unpacking this, this detail of this a lot more with the board. And so, so Lindsay is, is, um, Valente is our PR new, I say PR, public information person. So she's going to come up, this, this great thing that once I click on the suitcase, um, in the future, the suitcase is going to go to other things and it's going to be wonderful and interactive, well beyond my K grade of technology interface. So we're looking forward to doing that, I'm just putting pressure, she didn't realize it until tonight, that's what she's going to do. Um, so, so the tax cap implication is one that, that, that's a, a, a major concern. Because, man, this is Chase K. and Sam, oh my God, our tax cap is two percent. And I was like, that doesn't sound good because we, and so here's what people need to realize. That, um, our tax, I said was, um, our tax cap was, was last year, I said, I said it was three point, three point four. We actually went on two point six. So, so, so we, the tax cap could have allowed, we could have, we could have budgeted right up to that cap. But we didn't need to. And I say that very sincerely because we don't just use money because we have money. And, and we don't go to the grocery store hungry because it's when you buy things that you don't need. And I say that because I think people need to have that appreciation. That as a system, we're very, very thoughtful about what we invest in, how we use resources, and the tax implication for our community residents. And so last year, this year's budget, we live in twenty-two, we, the tax cap was at three point four. And we did all the things and we went out with a budget where implication was two point six. And so some people say, wow, you left money on the table. Well, that's one way to, like, but on the other side of it, I, I firmly believe in community confidence. That our community has to, they have to trust us. And it's not just an empty trust, it's a trust based upon track record. And because we will have a period of time where we're going to have to say to the community, we need a little bit more. We need you to be with us and stand firm with us because we don't want to have to cut things. And if you recall as a board, some of you on the board, that we had a, the, the situation in two thousand nine, we got elimination. We're in the middle of the year, nine point six million dollars, we're told it's gone, and we're like, and next year, every people were slashing and burning around the region. We didn't. Because we stood firm and say, we've been, we've been doing things and the community understand, we need to go a little bit higher, and we didn't. We didn't slash and burn. And we maintained programs in a time when people were slashing and burning. And I just want to emphasize that point because it's so important. It's so important that we start having this conversation about budget. Folks, it's not about dollars and cents, it's about what are we using the resources for? And the proof is in the pudding, the proof is, is Grace Perno, um, our students in our, in our classrooms and experience that they had. That's the proof that we want people to hold on to. So that's why I use that community confidence, that's an asset for us. And we want to make sure we keep that asset. And so when we look at the tax cap, um, calculation for next year, it's two percent. And so, so the difference between the two of them is one point two million dollars. Between two huge difference. One point two million dollars, we were to cut one point two million dollars back, a lot of people would be sorely disappointed in terms of, um, implication of program. And so we saw that on that side of it. And so now we have to begin the budget impact. So last year, our budget was two point two, right now in green, we're at one point eight nine, right now as we set. And so, and that's a tight budget, folks. That's a tight budget at a time where we have a lot of, you saw those before, those other contingencies that's hanging out there. That's a tight budget sequence because we were limited by the two percent cap. And so, so the one point eight is essentially virtually a two percent budget when you think about that piece of it. And so, so right now, so we, we want to say how much, what we can pack into this suitcase, knowing that it's only this big, but yet we still have the same amount of travelers, right? And so, so we want to pack it tight and be efficient with it and only bring what you have for the knee or what you can wear twice, kind of thing. Literally, when you think about those kind of things, it's my household, I tell my kids, only bring one pair of clothes, so you just keep changing, you know, whatever. So you got to trade off, you look different every day. So, so, so I, I, I say that because that's literally what we're trying to do. We have a tighter suitcase, but yet we have all these needs. And so, so now how do we really start to really prioritize, move things around differently to maximize? So that's kind of where we are right now in the budget sequence. Because the tax cap calculation is not going to change. And so now we got to figure out how do we preserve the program within the footprint that we have? And so, so, so here are the pieces that we have now, if, if we, this was based upon, on this, the governor's budget. Because that's the only thing that we have right now, we have one house budget that's out there, floating around, a lot of political conversation. But as a great friend of mine used to say, soup isn't soup until it's soup. You have all the ingredients on the counter, but all you have on the counter is a whole bunch of color vegetables, but it's not soup until you put it in the pot and all the ingredients boiled together and it tastes like something, right? Right now, we don't know, all we know is the governor's budget. And based upon that, we had a potential of, of, of a squeeze between what we need in the budget and what the, the cap would allow. So that's the gap, right? And to me, okay, that's a challenge, we all embrace the challenge. And so we have some, some, some potential piece of it. So foundation aid is a, is a one area that we bank on, and there's some good news coming from that, based upon what's happening right now. That, that now both, both houses, the Senate and the Senate, they both came out with one house budgets that's higher than the governor's. Good news, okay? So check, check, phew, wipe the bar off that, that's a So check, check, phew, wipe the bar off that, that's a potential increase of foundation aid. We actually ran, we, Mrs. Chase actually ran and ran the numbers based upon the governor's formula, and we were always looking to add about two hundred fifty, based on our calculation, about two hundred fifty thousand more, but we also left us about one hundred thousand, not a small of the budget gap. And so, but if we have increase in foundation aid, that addresses that issue. But we also have some other pieces that we want to talk about too, because we have reserves for a reason. So, so seven years ago, we approved the, the ERS reserve, the employment assistance reserve, the TRS reserve. And so, when we were doing it, we said we wanted to have the capacity for when we have a rainy day situation, that we no longer have to cut programs for kids, because we have a cost of it. So potentially using some of that reserve to mitigate those cost increases on that previous side, when I say the retirement cost increases, to try to mitigate those, and so therefore takes it out of the, the revenue expenditure sequence. So, so the point I'm making to you as a board is that, I'm never going to come to you as a board and say, we have a problem and I don't have a solution. We're going to come to you and say, here's the, the number that we have, and here's multiple solutions that we exercise. And so how do, which one we trigger based upon that implication? When I say implication, which one, if we trigger this, can we do it again? Or do we need to do that again, type of things as we move forward? So I hope that makes sense, so that makes sense to you as a board. So those are kind of things, and we'll be unpacking some of these things in greater detail to you as a board at, at the next meeting. So as we transfer forward, so, so that, that number before, that, that, that budget allocation I put in, the one point eight percent, I, I, I use this slide at this point, again, we're going to unpack some of these kind of things. It's true, because, it's important, because if you look at a budget document, there's a lot of numbers, a lot of details, and quite frankly, unless you're an accountant or CPA, it's not enjoyable. It's, it's just a lot of numbers, you have a lot of budget codes, and multiple, multiple lines of pluses and minuses all over the place, and after by kind of like, okay, can somebody just make sense out of this for me? And so, so me, the finance guy, I also want to make things simple, so I can have this conversation. So I call these the shares. So every school district across the state of New York has a similar categorization of expenditure. And so we, so this is due for, for me for two, two reasons. One, when I look at these shares, instructional salaries hover around thirty five point six percent of the budget is instructional salaries. So to give you some sense, of this hundred eighty-five million dollar budget where we are right now, it's not a proposal, this is kind of work in process. Thirty five, almost thirty-six percent of it goes directly to instructional salaries. Give you perspective, where is the money going? That's what people want to know, where is the money going? And so when I look at this, if you go back and look at our budget for the last sixteen years, that number is going to be right in that ballpark. Why? Because it's consistent with the model of education we're providing, because you can't say you're doing something and you're not investing. So the things that we say investing, we invest in it consistently, year for year, year, maybe those days are reality. So again, I won't go into these, administrative salaries, three point nine is commensurate with the group of people as well. And non-instructional salaries, of course, sixteen point four. So when you look at these categories, so you're talking about almost forty, fifty percent, fifty plus percent of is just on those salaries. So half the budget, and that's why I say we hire people to do the job, to give you some sense. So these shares is good, because then you can wrap your head around the whole budget and not trying to unravel a hundred eighty-five million dollars, because that's something that I'm not sure anyone wants to do. Equipment, about, less than half a percent, and people say, wow. And so, yeah, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, could we invest more in that? And yes, we could, and perhaps in contingency later on, that'd be a some opportunity, that, that might be one of those areas that we're going to beef up a little bit, so we accelerate certain processes, be some replacement of furniture, some of those kind of things as we move forward. But this gives you some sense of contractual otherness, everything from utilities, everything from the sun that falls into a contract. But this gives you some sense as a board where the money is going. And so, so we look at this from year to year to measure proportionality or similarity. It will be exact with similarity, then you know that, guess what, we're, we're, it's like traveling, right? You want to get to a certain destination, so you know what speed it takes to get there, to get a certain time. And if you want to consistently do that, going to work every morning, Joe knows he has to leave his house at seven forty-seven in order to get it eight o'clock, and if he leaves at seven fifty, he's going to be late, because he's going to drive the same speed, traffic, you get a point maybe. And so, so the same way the budget process, we want to know, if we want to have a certain outcome, what are the resources that we need to get to that outcome from year to year as we move forward? So this gives you some sense of shares. Again, we'll unpack some of the more details of these things with a, with a, with a kind of spreadsheet format as we move through the process. Textbook and library is about, again, about fifty point half of a percent of the budget, almost a million dollars that goes to all those resources. And this is driven also by a formula that gives a reimbursement back, so we try to make sure we maximize the reimbursement and we get back some of those things. So again, I'm not going to go through each one of them, but you see the sense of it. And then we have another big ticket piece on hand, benefits. So when you think about salaries and benefits, when we say it's about eight percent of our budget, it's literally about eight percent of our budget. And it's important then for you as a board to, okay, now I know where the money goes. And so therefore, we start making decisions, we know what's the implication, what are the big levers, so to speak, maybe for the impact of budget process? And again, we're going to unpack this more as, as we go through the process. But this just gives you some sense as a board where the shares of resources are, and how resources are used across the school district. So with that being said, we have this what-if. So the what-if is, huge what-ifs. So the what-if is, if we have federal funds earmarked to supplement and not supplant. It's not semantics, it's not fancy words. So, so when you think about the governor's budget supplanted using federal aid, in other words, what the state responsibility was, they use federal funds instead of state funds. And that's where the notion of a funding cliff came from, because if the federal funds aren't there a year from now, or two years from now, well, the state fund will be in the backfield. Now, the conversation is starting to shift to supplement, because that's where the, the recent American Recovery Plan, I think it was called, was had some stipulation that it's supposed to be supplement. In other words, guess what, state, you guys have your responsibility in schools, we've had this additional resources to do and deal with some of the, the, the challenges as a result of COVID. So now, we're watching that T-Lee very well, at nine million dollars, that we still have in the governor's proposal. How much of that, all, we hope will disappear and be backfilled with foundation aid? Then we get out of this supplant supplement conversation, and therefore, any resources come from the feds, one, they come to schools that we can supplement what we're doing, and hopefully they come with ability to be flexed out over multiple years. Last thing, I'm going to have a copy, I was reading the American Recovery Act, but if you ever get one of those documents, you know, it's not a, it's a snooze read. And, but the one thing it says has stipulation about 2023. And so, so if we have the flexibility to spread those dollars over that period of time, trust me, we're going to strategically spread it, so that we maximize every cent in terms of enhancing programs, as well as preserving our capacity as a system. So, so tremendous opportunity that we're going to try to take advantage of. So that's, that's a big what-if. The New York State budget, as, as, as we know it, read every day, that's, that's heating up big time. It's heating up big time, it's, it's the, the two, two men and a, and a woman in the room, sequence now is what they call it. And, and so, so, so now, that's heating up, both houses are coming up with it. Both houses are rejecting a lot of the, the government's proposals, go back to the lobbying part that we have tomorrow. One of the proposals was, and I'm going to pick up in a second, I have another slide, but anyway, they're, they're rejecting some of those things, I'll go to the next slide. So those are some of the, if those things happen, and if, so we have some additional flexibility and resources, it gives us to kind of go back and look at some of those COVID contingency pieces, again, that we really squeezed, to say, hmm, do we build some flexibility in that suppose we can't vote to three feet? And yet, we want to bring more kids in under a six-feet model, what does that look like? That's not ideal, by the way, the ideal is between that three and the zero, that's where we want to live, that's where our sweet spot want to be. But now, it gives us some flexibility to say, okay, can we build some of those type things into the sequence as we move forward? That's one of those kind of things we have to look at. Then, look at some pieces of it, how do we look at some target equipment, as I mentioned, equipment, but how do we look at some of those kind of, some things that we know that, man, we have some resource, we'd be great to do these things, but not doing those things isn't detrimental, but it would be great to do those things. And so, so almost separating between, not necessarily wish lists, but things that are a little bit want and want, but not as, 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 as weak as a wish, so to speak. And so, so, so we're looking at some of those kind of things, and, and trying to also avoid spending money, especially federal funds, what I call one-time money, on anything that's going to have recurring costs, it's a bad thing. We don't want to get into pay for something that we don't know if we would have the money to pay for it through. So we try to buy, purchase things that are one-time cost, that will last us for a period of time, and so we can plan for replacement or obsolescence at some point in the future. So let's give the board some sense of, as the whole state budget process unfolds, we don't want to box ourselves in to not be able to take advantage of the potential resources that are coming out of that. And I anticipate that, that those conversations will heat up quite a bit in the next couple of days here, because the April one is still looming, and everybody's trying to use as a, as a baseline, and they're seeing the state hasn't had a one-time budget in a while, but we'll see if this time will be a good difference for those kind of things. So I get, I kind of want to share the what-if with the board, because we want to take those what-if into consideration, because an advocacy piece, as I said, the supplant, this, this conversation, a week ago was the hottest conversation. This conversation tomorrow, when you get on those calls, may not be a hot conversation now, because both one-house budgets have recognized that they don't want to do that. So the question is, is you say we don't want to do that, the question is, what are you going to do? You know, that's the other side of the question that we have to make re-ass. Well, you don't want to do that, so what does that mean then? What are you going to do? Because the other side, if you say you're not going to do this, and you're not backfilling the foundation aid, you're not doing anything, we're still in a bad situation. So, so that's a conversation piece. Stabilization of foundation aid up here is a big part of the conversation, that not only for next year, moving forward, the state's most been trying to fully fund the foundation aid since 2009, when it did gap elimination, and they still have. So that's a big piece of it as we have to move forward. The, the, the predictive piece, so right now, I'm hearing that the whole consolidation, remember that the, they're somehow consolidating thirteen A categories into one in the governor's budget? Both houses have rejected that piece of it, yes, if that's the case, that's huge. That's huge, because that came for us with a, 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 a thing like a four hundred thousand dollar reduction, like, hey, when they did that, I'm like, whoa, stop it. We spent the money with a promise that you're going to reimburse us the next year, and now you want to break that promise, that can't happen. So now, that piece is good, because it gives us predictive ability to plan forward for all the A categories. And related to transportation, I heard some news today, that they're also talking about for us, this, so remember from last March till June, we paid everyone, no one, because we weren't allowed to terminate people in the building. And our transportation folks were doing different things in transportation, the reason I'm saying transportation, transportation has an aid piece to it, and the state decided, well, since you are transporting kids, we're not going to aid you, stop the presses. We still have those expenditures. Now I'm hearing that they're going to go back and aid that, and for us, if I'm not mistaken, this is Chase, if I'm wrong, that's about seven hundred thousand dollars. That's a huge, huge piece. And so, so we were kind of geared up to say, okay, if we don't get the seven hundred thousand dollars this year, what are we squeezing this year? Because if you don't have the money to spend, you don't have the money to spend. So this year, we were squeezing already with anticipation, and so now that happened, that provides us some opportunities, some flexibility, that not only as utilization, but their capacity for future years, and that makes some sense as, as we move forward. So that's a big piece that we have to think about. And the reserve capacity, I heard today as well, there's a proposal in the table to allow schools to, to, there's a four percent carryover, standard value carryover, to, to relax that piece of it, particularly if people get federal funds. What you don't want is, all of a sudden, I'm capped at four, I get federal funds come in that will bump me up four, and so now, I'm spending money on garbage, because I want to get on the floor. No, no, that's, I mean, what do you think about it? It doesn't make sense, right? To say, just spend money, because we have an artificial barrier, just spend money on anything to fall below the barrier. No, we're not going to spend money on anything, we're going to spend money on the most important thing. And so if you want to give us flexibility, that's great, because now, again, it gives us capacity to build to the future with some of those reserved accounts moving forward. So these last two, again, this came out, this, these are written about them today, these last two huge things that, that tomorrow, we want to get some confirmation, in our legislative confirmation, how true or how likely these things are going to be, because you have the one-house budget, but the governor still has the, the veto piece, or it didn't have to be overrised, as far as people in this room know about that process than me. But that's where we had to put our legislative folks' feet to the fire, to say, we need to have, make sure that we have assurance in these things. Because it's a huge piece, it's not only that next year's budget, but our capacity for the coming year as well. So, 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 and I just put this last line here, because this is where the checks and downs in the legislative process becomes important. And it's part of our responsibility, for our folks in, in their honest place as well. So with that being said, I'm going to transition real quick. So, so, so the, the board vacancy is going to be a proposition piece, the transportation piece, Mr. Karen was here, this, and, and again, if you want to come forward a little bit. So another proposition that, that, that we, that will be able to put the budget, is the budget, the bus proposition. Someone just has to walk you through the budget, the bus proposition piece, as well, because you may want to change your voice anywhere, I'm going to hear my voice for hours. And just, because yours is scroll, so maybe that'll be a scroll.
Thank you, sir, good evening, everyone. So first, let me say, I want to thank the board, and I want to thank the voters for support on bus proposition every year. Really, your support is key to our safe and efficient operation that we run, so I want to thank you upfront with that. So, I share this with you every year, these are the criterias that we use, or just a reminder of what we look at when we are thinking of replacing our, our buses. So in today's bus market, we're experiencing a push for new safety technologies that's being introduced as either standard or as optional equipment. So currently, we have buses, new buses, that have come in with collision mitigation technology, which assists our drivers in providing a safe ride for our students, it's just a, a great technology for safety. And the pictures are sideways, but if you look at the school bus signs on, on the buses, they're very, very bright signs. This is a new technology that just came on the scene. This is what I term as disruptive technology for school bus safety, not only for the school bus itself, but mainly for, for the children. These signs can be seen in the dark, a thousand feet away, versus your typical three hundred fifty feet for the incondescendent backlit signs. So, again, great positive for student safety, and all our new buses are coming with them. So typically, since I've been here, I've come front and board, I've asked for anywhere between twenty to twenty-two school buses. So as a department, we're aware of the adverse fiscal reality that the district is facing, and we recognize the need for us also to do our part to help and keep the cost down. So we're in a unique position right now to do just that. We're going to look at going with seventeen buses this year. Again, the district has made a huge investment in the fleet over the past years. It's really has paid off. In our proposal for this bus replacement, we can afford some wiggle room without causing purchase bubbles down the road. We have a fairly young bus fleet, currently, it's in that five point four years of age on average. So we can extend the replacement on some of the buses past their due dates. Our fleet maintenance supervisor and his team have done a remarkable job in the preventive maintenance and warranty arena, and their effort is paying dividends in our operational readiness. And currently, I'm going to knock on wood, we are four DOT inspections away from achieving a hundred percent passing rate for the period of April one, 2020, to the end of this month, which is DOT's inspection marking period. I believe this will probably be a first for Shen, having achieved a hundred percent passing rate, so hopefully we'll keep going in that direction. So as we've done in the past years, we will auction off, we will auction off used buses, and if needed, reassign some of them to the department. This year, we're going to convert two vehicles, one for use by the warehouse, so they don't have to use the big truck to deliver small items, and one for security, for traffic control, especially when we go back to having large crowd events. So, we are asking for the seventeen, this is the breakdown of the seventeen buses. Ten large, sixty-six passengers, two wheelchairs, and five Type A, those are to be converted advanced, for the cost not to exceed one million, seven hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred seventy dollars. And that is my presentation, any questions on the bus replacement plan?
How many buses do you mean on the word, this, or context?
So, so right now, the fleet consists of two hundred fourteen buses, from suburbanous all the way up to seventy-two passengers.
How many lots do you have?
Uh, we won't count COVID, about two point two, two point three, I mean.
So that's impressive that you do, going down to seventeen.
Appreciate it, I have one, one last one for the board, I promise to go fast. So, so, so again, the reason why we did a budget, because, so you won't hear, we'd love to hear from Al every week, but you won't hear from Al again. So, 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 so that's the, the bus piece of it, and you know, as outside that, I must have a little bit of emotion. And you know, as Al said, I almost got a little bit emotional because Gary Delato, for every year, would press Al on make sure we get all the buses we need. And so he put that scenario on, and I was kind of like hearing Gary in my head saying, well, Mr. Karen, you sure that's enough buses? And you know what? And I think Al's comment speaks to the due diligence that we have had as a system to make sure that our fleet is always up and running. And I'm going to punctuate that with the board got the correspondence last, for me, from North Colleen as an example. That's an example of when we runs, and I'm going to give kudos to Al. He runs a tight ship, efficient ship. And, and when we do that, not only do we do ourselves great service, but we're able to come to the aid of others as well when, when necessary. So, so it's not because we have extras, because we, we, we make sacrifices to help other folks. And that was a good example of that. So kudos to, to that department, the folks. And right now a lot of conversation with transportation and buses and capacity to drive school schedules. Because schools can't open without kids. Kids need to get to school on buses. So that's a big, so everything works hand in hand. Last piece, I'm not going to go a lot with this, just wanted to, to share the presentation. We have a capital project referendum coming up. And I want to share, so, sort of the referendum that we're looking at is twenty-six point five million. Not a lot, and I'll say not a lot of comparison. So the decision that we made, and the board is aware, that we had that schedule that we tried to do managerial projects instead of like, you've seen some places where a hundred and ninety million dollar projects and some of those things just too, too, too large to manage effectively. And so we want to have projects that we can manage effectively from start to finish and maximize the resources. And so that's our, our sweet spot in terms of how we approach those things. And so, so we're looking at probably what's going to be broken down, we have some, some reserves to offset the costs, some borrowing, some building, some building aid reimbursement back. Our declining debt is essentially, we're going to add this project and the debt service is actually going to be lower because of us, the, the, um, the climbing debt rate and, and maturation of debt service from year to year. Your mortgage payment, I used the example last time, don't buy a new car until you pay for one. And, and I pay for two now, my daughter's brother before third. And I keep having to say, not yet, not yet, not yet. I'm going to say that till she goes to college and then she will need it, so perfect. So, so, so that's another parenting thing that's for free. So, 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 so that's a big piece of it as well. So the debt service piece is a big piece we watch all the time. And so we're talking about very minimal costs on, on households to, to do the things that we're proposing. Very deliberate planning process goes with that. So we do some work at Scannell, Tisago, a lot of it is, is stuff that's not very, it's just abatement of floors. It's, 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 that's the stuff, things that, that every, every project we're going to do is best of work. That's just the nature of the beast and we have to do those kind of things. Looking at some window replacements, looking at some air conditioning. So all these buildings had chillers, but we, then we didn't finish the loop, so to speak, the vermin loop in all these buildings. And so now with this project, we're going to finish the loop to have air conditioning in all those buildings. So it's a great, great opportunity to provide flexibility, especially in the summer, we have summer programs. Aranjan and Shattagon have been the house for summer program because they had air conditioning. And so that's why those buildings get overused and so how do we create some flexibility? So that's a big piece of the piece that we're going to look at as well. And payment is always going to be ongoing piece. And if you ride through the campus, you see we have some spots, we're like, yeah, we have to start paying. People have to remember though, this project approved in twenty twenty-one, probably won't get constructed till twenty twenty-three. And so we can't wait till the paving has huge problems. We got to see what will this look like in three years? And if we think it's going to look bad, we got to plan for it. Just to kind of give you some context as we move forward. Carolina ran a very similar thing as the other, so we call these northern south elementary. So I'm not going to go through that. Changal, similar, some abatement, some power issues. But Changal had to upgrade power use because as you have more technology, you need more what? More power. So, so, so the lobby goes with some of those power upgrades. And windows is always one of those things, window replacement is something we always engage in as we move forward. Ite, again, Ite and Changal are mirror image of each other. The buildings are literally mirror image of each other, one is up, one is down, if people don't realize that. So, so that's, so, so similar condition exists in both of the buildings. Aranjan's Shattagon, the newer buildings, we still have some borders, some older borders now that we have to replace. So these are things that, that you know, these aren't what I call the, the pot within. These are things that we just simply have to do to keep our, our business, our buildings at high efficiency. Middle school is where things get nice and neat. And I love this, and Mrs. Gories is, is chomping at the bit. So, so she's like one of the lottery for this year. She gets a new AP that's going to be appointed tonight and she gets, but this is going to hold her here for another ten years. So she didn't realize that because we're going to delay the construction to make sure she stays here for another ten years. And so, so here in the middle school, we're going to do a lot of neat things. This back wing here in the middle school, if you go out and walk, that's the oldest wing in the building right here, this little center. And we knew someone, I'm not going to say whose name, who reminded me that when she was in school, they used to have dances and that was the end of the hallway before you keep going around. So yes, she's shaking her head back there, I won't say nothing about Mrs. South in public. So, so, so we're looking at some of those older areas and they're now having to be science rooms. And science rooms are one of those areas that we have to upgrade because of where technology. So, so this one area we're going to look at, particularly at Guana, looking at some of the kind of things, some force, some power capacity. Lighting is a big piece of it, so we transition away from, from the lighting sequence, the LED lights, the brightness and more, it's possible. It is better already for support and so we moving towards that as a system as we move forward and it's broken seal. But here's a piece that, 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 before that, and then the second piece of it too. We're looking at athletic fields out there and create a, a multi-use turf field to that piece of it. Because when we built the pool back here, there used to be a, a field for phys ed. And now that field doesn't exist. So all middle school phys ed goes out, the field behind the code. And if you come in the afternoon, you also see, I call it the, the, the thirteen hundred little kids who run around for after-school programs and other parents who, who sit on the guardrails. So we're so thoughtful to give them seats to sit on, call the guardrail. And, and so, so we see it all the time, we see the fields get hammered during the spring, it's certainly a wet spring. And so every year we got the issues of, of, um, um, how do we fertilize or not fertilize fields, all those kind of things. And we also saw a tremendous benefit gain from having a turf field in high school. That field, granted now we're starting to get back to private code, used all the time by groups all over the place. And so, so here's what we're proposing for that, hopefully this picture does it justice. So this is the roadway over here to the far left right here. And this is the field parallel to that. So, so it's just, and it's not fancy, it's, it's effective, multi-use, multi-purpose phys ed, modified sports, youth sports, all sorts of stuff, give us a different capacity. We also have to resurface all the tennis courts because tennis courts haven't resurfaced in fifteen years. And so, so that's a big part of resurfacing, that's why the blue, you see the blue on the tennis courts there. We have the tennis courts that's over here behind the, between west and the middle school. And then the tennis courts by east, so we have to resurface those as well. So, so and then we have to do some work on the actual track in the original state that we're going to be resurfacing that, that track and those turf regards. By the time we get to that, those things will be sixteen years. And the reason why that becomes important, the state has this great thing that if you're not fifteen years useful life, they deduct the aid. And so you know what? Fine, by the time you get to that project, it'll be about sixteen years anyway. Because that is two years out before we get to a potential construction phase. So they're giving, this is what I'm talking about, so that the track, all those kind of things will be resurfaced as well as we move forward. So, so that's one of those project pieces I wanted to point out to the board. The, the other piece that I want to point out is, sorry, I have to pull back because it's some sound like that. Should have went to the last one. Other piece is something neat that, that, that we're going to have to do here that has a direct impact on, 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 on Mrs. So this is the middle school office here. And it goes down into our counseling, nursing offices, this whole stretch down is what we call, it's called services, right? Office, all those things. And this, the, the Guana is like an upper place. So you come to Guana and you come, but you don't come to the main office in Guana. And this, and Mrs. Gories has talked about it for a long time. And, and we didn't necessarily have the, the fiscal incentive to, to make it a reality because we just didn't want to spend a lot of money just for office upgrade, not, not that office upgrade is important, but not when we have other needs. And so, so how do we then look at this as opportunity? So by looking at this, it, it creates a situation that we pick up, we pick up another instructional space, which is huge. So, so capacity is a huge issue. We get another classroom, an additional classroom by transitioning all this to, I think it starts, the rooms here and this following down. We pick up another instructor space by the transition piece of, so it's a huge piece. So now the investment is real well, right? So it's not just a one-to-one trade-off, it's we're spending a dollar and you're getting a dollar and fifty cents in return, so to speak, using that kind of ladder. And so, so we're pretty excited about, about that piece. I mean, that's not a very good graphic, but it's kind of give you the, the sense of the area that we're looking to trade out these kind of things and do this. And then finally, we're going to build a legitimate Guana entrance. So you know what Guana Middle School is and, and also not only that, separation of student traffic from walking to the building. You walk into Guana now and I see it many times, especially like level six grade kids who go to tech class. They're all going out and people come into the building and you can't separate adults from kids and not a good situation. So how the configuration is, we're able to create, when you come into Guana, you're going to come into a desk room that goes into office. And so you're not coming into the hallway because now all the offices and anything that you need as a visitor to the school is there and not up here. And so, 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 so not only are we creating a classroom addition, but it creates a much more efficient situation and also add a safety dimension to it as well. So I'm pretty excited about this piece of the project. And so, 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 so this is, that's one of the neat things that I really want to point out to the board that as we go through the capital project referendum, we're always trying to figure out what's the value add, right? Yes, we have to do things, maintain things, keep things from disrepair, but we're always looking for the value add opportunity. What's the value add? Add another classroom, people, you probably don't even realize how significant it is, to add another classroom space in the building is huge. Huge capacity for us as we move forward. So we're pretty excited about this project and hopefully the voters will be as excited too as a part of the referendum. So this is what the referendum proposal is what potential it'll look like as we move forward. So that's all, we're not a voice, so that's two that I have. So thank you. If you have any questions, I'll sit down and get some waters, put my mask back on and answer your questions.
Thank you for the introduction.
At this point, Joe's going to come up and talk about staffing recommendation?
Good evening, and we do have one staffing recommendation this evening. We would like to recommend Mr. Thomas Hopkins as the new assistant principal at Guana. And Mrs. Gories is here, principal of Guana, and Mr. Hopkins, Thomas, if you could stand up for me.
I got a question for five and five.
Not, not again.
That's where the next slide.
Thomas most recently serves as the elementary principal at Rensselaer Park Elementary School in Lansingburg. And he has had experience at the high school as an assistant principal. He has a bachelor's of science degree from Siena College, a master's of education from Union College, and his leadership search certification is from Massachusetts State. He is going to be joining us upon approval, April twenty-sixth, and we look forward to having him join our staff. So now, Tommy.
Well, now, hold on, first, Joe.
Sorry.
Can I get a motion to approve? Naomi's first, Rob's second. Thomas, questions other than a big congratulations? Welcome aboard, you're amazing, I'm sure. Can I get them all, all in favor? Motion for this.
How do you want to say a few words? I have a presentation, but they wouldn't upload it. So I appreciate it coming over here. Obviously, I, I appreciate that, now being a part of principal for the last few years. I've got to work with people like Mr. Pace, Mr. Jones, and just the reputation of, of Mr. Gories and your district. It's been, it's been a pleasure being a part of the interview process and now just actually getting to become a part of Shen is, is just a, a real pleasure. I'm eager to join. I can't believe I have to wait five weeks, but I, I'll, I'll get started and I'll, I'll be ready to go.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, does anybody have anything they want to discuss tonight, board-related? Okay. That's Rob's, a great presentation, thank you so much. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Thomas first, Bob the second, all in favor? Thank you for being here.